It's, uh, I'm gonna call immediately tonight to order at, uh, for the board of aldermen regular meeting, March sixteenth, twenty twenty, at seven P. M. If I could get a roll call, please.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Woken?
Present.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah. All right, if I could everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, we have a public hearing, is that correct? Amendment section thirty-one, day twenty-four.
This is, this is the second of two public hearings. Uh, this was, the other public hearing was held Monday, March ninth, before planning and zoning commission. What this change to the zoning code does is actually brings our requirement for square footage in R three zones up to what the county standard is, so it'll change our square footage from fifteen hundred per family to point five hundred per family. So we would mirror what the county does. And planning and zoning was in favor of it.
Any, uh, public comments? Does it look like it's on the close of the public hearing? Uh, at this time, we take comments from citizens.
I have just a couple of little things, as usual. Linda Borman, eight hundred Jason Court. Um, I know that we're going to be revisiting the delinquency and late fees tonight on utilities, but with this going on, are we going to put an exception in there for all these people who might possibly be gonna be losing their jobs and can't pay?
In that ordinance, no. Um, the whole situation is a state of emergency, so in that situation, the mayor can do a temporary, uh, statement.
Okay. And I know we've talked about this before, but there are still a lot of people who are really confused with the recycling and garbage pickup and everything that's down right now. And we've got to find some way to get information out to the people who don't have internet, who don't read the paper, who have electronic payments, and they never come in this office.
With our new billing system and the new statements that we can send out, we can send out two papers at once. So your statement's gonna come, not as a card anymore, it's gonna come in an envelope. So we will be able to do a newsletter that will go to everybody at that point in time.
Cause there's people who quit doing recycling because they thought that they understood that they couldn't, that we weren't doing it anymore. And then, of course, there's people who have made multiple trips to the bins out here, and they've been full every time they've been there. And I know we talked about, or you all talked about that last week, about maybe doing a third pickup a week and stuff like that, so.
We've already increased it to three a week.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens? All right, I'll close the comments from citizens when we go to consent agenda. Um, it would be of eight minutes of prior meetings, uh, for the board of aldermen.
That would be everything except for the P and C minutes, except for the first part of the budget.
Do what?
That would be everything but the P and C minutes, except for the first part of the budget, cause they haven't included P and C yet.
That's true, yeah, except for D.
No, it does include those minutes. It does not include the minutes from March ninth.
Right.
So it would, it would include everything that's in the consent's agenda, listed in the consent agenda area.
Listed in here on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you all can look those over. And bring up any concerns, thoughts, questions. Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Alderman Hudson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, consent agenda approved. Accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars equalling six hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. Please look those over.
What was wrong with truck twenty-seven? Got a twenty-four hundred at RMS, and it's got, uh, sixteen hundred in him.
I think that's the bucket truck. Actually, I know that's the bucket truck. Um, they've had quite a bit of issues with that. It's the low wing, um, so the bucket had to be redone, and then the controls were messed up, so it's had quite a bit of work to have.
I, I think I'll, I'm gonna drop that to its parts.
That's the one that's on the budget, proposed budget for next year to replace, right?
No, actually, it was just gonna be an additional one, one in addition to that one, so they would have that one, and then another one like it. Um, I can really anticipate they'd have the problems that they've had with it this year.
I'd love that we accept accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a total of six hundred and sixteen, six hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents.
First, but Alderman Hudson accepted by his neighbor, they decided, losing a lot, uh, data booking. And, uh, all in favor?
I'll turn this year away.
Thank you, all in favor. All opposed. Accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars equal six hundred sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents has been passed. That moves us to the action agenda. Um, the first, we have an ordinance, authorizing citizen trade Missouri to enter into a, uh, personal property lease purchase transaction with U. S. Bancorp, government leasing, finance, incorporated, approving the execution of certain documents in connection therein. So if I could, could I, Alderman Rogers, could I get you to take that ordinance, please?
Yes. Bill number?
Two, three, three, six.
Move the bill number two, three, three, six. Ordinance authorizing the city of Centray, Missouri to enter into a personal property lease purchase transaction.
You have to make a.
Wait a minute, move the bill number, be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Would it, would it pass?
Bill number two, three, three, six. Ordinance authorizing the city of Centray, Missouri to enter into a personal property lease purchase transaction with U. S. Bancorp, government leasing, and finance incorporated, and approving the execution of certain documents in connection therewith. Move that bill number two, three, three, six, be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two, three, three, six. An ordinance authorizing the city of Centray, Missouri to enter into a personal property lease purchase transaction with U. S. Bancorp, government leasing, and finance incorporated, and approving the execution of certain documents in connection therewith. Move the bill number two, three, three, six, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
The first and second for roll call vote, Tara. Roll call vote.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Motion passes. Ordinance number?
Three, zero, four, four.
Go. Number two is, uh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centray, uh, to execute a contract with TCF Equipment Finance for lease purchase agreement for a, uh, Timco four thirty-five street sweeper. Um, Mr. Borman, would you please take that ordinance?
Uh, bill number, please.
Two, three, three, seven.
I move that, uh, bill number two, three, three, seven, be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centray, Missouri to execute a contract with TCF Equipment Finance for a lease purchase agreement for the, a Timco four thirty-five street sweeper. I moved it, uh, bill number three, three, uh, seven, be given a second reading, no, we've got to.
Two, three.
Two, two. So, yes. Did we just get a vote yet, did we?
Okay, why didn't you say?
Yeah, you're taking the motion, and then I seconded it.
You seconded it.
There you go.
Yeah.
Now, now there's a, all in favor?
All in favor. All opposed?
We got to throw it over here.
I move the bill number two, three, uh, three, seven, be given a second reading by title only.
We've done that already.
We've done, second one?
Well, you haven't read it, though. We just voted for you to read it.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of Centray, Missouri, execute a contract with the, uh, TCF Equipment Finance for a lease purchase agreement for the Timco four thirty-five street sweeper.
One second.
No.
I moved the bill number two, three, three, seven, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. All in favor?
It's a good thing you're out there.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Ordinance number, please.
Three, zero, four, five.
Okay, go. Permit some licensing, this is where we're at now, uh, it says there's none.
Correct.
Okay, so move on to legal. Um, we have an ordinance amending subsection G of section thirty-one dash twenty-four of the Centray City Code concerning the required minimum square footage required per family areas of R three, multiple family dwelling, uh, dwelling district. Uh, Alderman Motley, could you please take that ordinance?
Sure, bill number two, three, three, eight. Move that bill number two, three, three, eight, be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving past.
Move that bill number two, three, oh, already did that, sorry. An ordinance amending subsection G of section thirty-one dash twenty-four of the Centray City Code concerning the required minimum square footage required per family in areas of R dash three, multiple family dwelling districts. Move that bill number two, three, three, eight, be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
An ordinance amending subsection G of section thirty-one dash twenty-four of the Centray City Code concerning the required minimum square footage required per family in areas of R dash three, multiple families dwelling district. Move that bill number two, three, three, eight, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Uh, the first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Uh, bill passes, ordinance number, please.
Three, zero, four, six.
Go. Thank you. Okay, goes to number two, amending section two, day thirteen of the code of the city of Centray, Missouri regarding the start time for monthly board of aldermen, uh, meetings. Uh, one, just, that'd be six thirty, is what that's asking for. So if, uh, if you take that ordinance, all in, then Hudson, please.
Bill number?
Two, three, three, nine.
Move the bill number two, three, three, nine, be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance amending section two dash one, three of the code of the city of Centray, Missouri regarding the start time for monthly board of aldermen meetings. Move the bill number two, three, three, nine, be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
An ordinance amending section two dash one, three of the code of the city of Centray, Missouri regarding the start time for monthly board of aldermen meetings. Move the bill number two, three, three, nine, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Passes, ordinance number, please.
Three, zero, four, seven.
Pardon me, Your Honor.
Is this just for the main meeting, or does this include the committee meeting as well?
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
And when does it, when will that go into effect?
It goes into effect, it says it takes effective in full force and effect immediately, so it says upon and from after the date of passage.
No, I don't have that information.
All of a sudden, but if we're looking at it, I would just, no, so it, it takes effect immediately, sorry.
Is this both?
Yeah, it says for, it says the regular meetings of the board of aldermen, so this was only for the third Monday specifically, so I think this only applies to.
To this general.
Just to your general board of aldermen.
So do you wanna change the committee, if you wanna change the committee meeting, you have to.
We've meant a different section of the code.
Okay, we can do that.
That's what I was, that's what I thought.
Yeah. I thought we were doing both of them.
Okay, well, my bad, I only fixed the one section when I proposed it to Heather, so I apologize, we can do another one next month to meet the others.
We will, we'll do that, that's fine.
We have to have a meeting on, uh, thirty, and then we did, in fiscal year, so.
All right. Okay.
So is that meeting six thirty then?
You guys, you guys can end the end of this meeting.
Yes, because that would be a regular meeting.
Yeah. I'll be late to every meeting for a while.
It might be, it might be a little late.
Okay, we'll move to, uh, number three. Amending section twenty-six dash one, one, two of the code of the city of Centray, Missouri regarding delinquent payment, service disconnection, reconnection of service. Uh, Alderman Woken, would you please take that ordinance?
Uh, bill number, please.
Two, three, four, zero.
I move the bill number two, three, four, zero, be given its first read by title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, two, three, four.
An ordinance amending section one, uh, two, six, dash one, one, two of the code of the city of Centray, Missouri regarding delinquent payment, service disconnection, reconnection of service. I move the bill number two, three, four, zero, be given its second read by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
An ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one, one, two of the code of the city of Centray, Missouri regarding delinquent payment, service disconnection, reconnection of service. I move the bill number two, three, four, zero, be adopted by roll call vote.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Okay, bill passes, ordinance number, please.
Three, zero, four, eight.
Okay. Number four, setting the compensation of certain employees of the city of Centray, Missouri, uh, ordinance.
Yeah.
If I could get Alderman Magley, would you please take that, uh, that bill, please, ordinance?
Bill number, please.
Two, three, four, one.
Move that bill number two, three, four, one, be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
An ordinance to set the compensation of certain employees of the city of Centray, Missouri. Move that bill number twenty-three, forty-one, be given its reading, but, second reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
An ordinance to set the compensation of certain employees of the city of Centray, Missouri. Move that bill number twenty-three, forty-one, be given, roll call vote, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Second reading.
He's already done the second.
Okay, got the last one, right. Okay, the first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call vote, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Motion passes, uh, ordinance number?
Three, zero, four, nine.
Okay. Now, number five, changing municipal court date in the city of Centray, Missouri to the third Monday of the month, and the starting time to nine A. M., adding a new section twenty-five dash two to the city code of Centray. Ordinance, if I could get Alderman Rogers, please take, take that ordinance?
Bill number?
Two, three, four, two.
Move that bill number two, three, four, two, be given its first reading by title only.
The first, first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two, three, four, two, and ordinance changing the municipal court date in the city of Centray, Missouri to the third Monday of the month, and the starting time from municipal court to nine A. M., adding a new section twenty-five dash two to the city code of Centray. Move that bill number twenty-three, forty-two, be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Bill number twenty-three, forty-two, and ordinance changing the municipal court date in the city of Centray, Missouri to the third Monday of the month, and the starting time from municipal court to nine A. M., adding a new section twenty-five dash two to the city code of Centray. Move that bill number twenty-three, forty-two, be adopted by roll call vote.
The first and the second for roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call vote, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Okay, ordinance passes, ordinance number?
Three, zero, five, zero.
Okay. Now we're down to six, establishing a pandemic flu leave policy. It's a resolution, uh, if I could, uh, Alderman Borman, would you please take the resolution?
Sure. Bill number, please.
Two, three, four, three.
I move that bill number two, three, four, three, be given its first and only reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution, bill.
Uh, an ordinance establishing a pandemic, pandemic flu, uh, leave policy. I move that bill number two, three, four, three, be adopted by roll call vote.
The first and the second for roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes? Roll call vote, Tara, please.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Passes, uh, resolution, no complaints, Tara.
R dash two, zero, dash zero, three.
Thank you.
We'd like to say that we did have our first, uh, pandemic leadership team meeting on, was it Friday? I think it was Friday, and it went really well. All the department heads met together, and we talked about the priorities in case that we were down thirty to forty percent of our, uh, workforce due to this pandemic, and, um, so we're working on getting all of that established. I had everything from the police department, the water department, uh, working on the electric department, and the street department, so, uh, overall, felt like it went really well.
Yeah, it was, it was a good thing, you're about pre-engagement. Good discussion, so. That moves us now to purchasing. Anything for purchasing right now at this time?
No.
Any old business? All right, we'll move to new business. Um, number one's appointments. I don't have any appointments, correct? Number two, authorizing street closure in front of the city hall for mammogram van in October twenty twenty. Motion. Yeah, wish your game, I mean, it's.
Lieutenant Chris, what do you have to make? Um, basically, we've not set anything up yet, we wanted to, to get yours approved early, but Centray backs the loop, is possibly one to post this. They give, give low-cost mammograms, um, they come to you, I think, uh, we have to provide somebody to schedule the appointments. Um, and they'll work out here, I think they do up to twenty, twenty-seven in one day. So, I mean, that, this may raise me a little bit more old than a lot of people, so.
So the clinic van would be set up here, people pre-registered, and they would come and have the procedure done.
Yep.
Here, uh, uh, much cheaper than working all the time.
Who's van is it, sir?
Uh, Ellis Michelle, I believe.
That's what it says.
Okay.
And who will be authorized it?
Second.
The first and the second, authorize the, uh, street closing in front of the city hall for mammogram van in October, uh, twenty twenty, with the date to be set, uh, by the police department, has that, they get set up. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Get back to us as that materializes, and what we need to do on our side of it, to help you with it, and thank you for your calls.
You don't really need anything, all we need is bathroom access for their employees, that's it.
Perfect, all right. Thank you for doing that. Um, three, authorize the street closing in front of the city hall for a torch a truck event.
No, 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 no.
This is not torching.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, is this your own view, or is something that's not right? I thought torch a truck, and I said, this don't sound safe to me. So, uh, I feel better on it anyway. Cause I was gonna say.
Don't worry about it.
I'm as spontaneous as anybody, but spontaneous combustion, I don't know, man, I don't know, so.
It's gonna work, so. Okay, good. It wasn't more embarrassing that my slip than, uh, more than a tall time here, so.
James, you get all this?
We, we actually had this event in May of twenty eighteen for, uh, during National Public Works Week. It went over really well. We didn't get it organized last year, so Amy was, um, uh, Amy, her in the office was talking about it again. She asked if we could do it again, so we're asking if we can close the, uh, street for that. And as long as school is out by then.
I was gonna say.
Uh, it will be a really great day, but if school is not out by then, then I don't know that that's the best day to have it because we won't have as many kids there.
Right.
Um, so the date could change.
The date could change, but as long as there's not a pandemic thing going on, we can't leave that six feet and another touching thing.
You can't touch it. You can look at it.
Yeah, so that's not.
There's a torch in the truck.
Might be torching.
Kill the germs on it. That's all I'll do, so.
Uh, any thoughts? Have I got a, some way?
I mean, that is a poss, I mean, if we are still in school at that time.
Sure.
I mean, you could still, you know, give that idea or this to the elementary school and maybe make it.
You know, we could, we could entertain a motion to, to do it on the twenty-second or, uh, another day appropriate with the school. School having dismissed, does that make sense?
Yep, that'd be great.
So, moved.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
What's tentative date on that?
May twenty.
Twenty-second.
Thank you.
Um, one to see administrator. See administrator number report of February twenty twenty.
My report is in the packet. I would like to mention one thing. Phone call right before the meeting with, uh, Earl, park director, and, um, I got a phone call that I missed while I was in here. I said it's voicemail, but it looked like it was the school district.
School shut down from the eighteenth through the third.
Yes. So, uh, he in.
You were saying.
Because you're not supposed to have more than ten people in a setting, the recenter will also be closing during.
Well, that was on Facebook already yesterday. Well, they said all the after-school stuff and the classes, I apologize, yes.
Yeah, they said, and they said that they would be, as long as school was open, they would be open.
Yeah.
Uh, but since school is not, then they are going to also be closed.
Kids will still be able to go into the parks, correct, at this time?
As long as they stay six feet away from each other.
They can't gather in groups of ten or twenty or thirty, they have to separate. It's all the same.
What is this gonna do for our April fourth election or whatever that, that is?
It's April seventh.
Whatever. I mean, is there a possibility that it's going to be canceled, moved? Anybody?
I mean, I haven't heard from your election authority, which is your county clerk, that they're planning on moving it. I mean, I've spoken with them.
I mean, if you can't have more than te, ten people in a room, they're gonna have to have somebody outside holding everybody off, and that's more of an issue.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm actually an election judge, and that's what our county clerk was directing S and K for county is that the election judge is someone will be responsible for at least entry points so that no more than so many people can be in the polling place at a certain time, so I think they're addressing that.
I don't think you can cancel it. Sure.
I've canceled, I've canceled all my voting yells. I have numerous set up all over town, and I canceled them all.
Thank you, Don.
You're such an amazing.
That's gonna save you guys, isn't it?
Thank you.
Yeah, crowds, you already have crowds.
I know you all would want to attend them.
Um.
Yeah.
We need to mention that. We're gonna, we, we've been talking at city hall, I've been talking to superintendent of schools this weekend and, um, between a rock and a hard spot because, you know, peer pressure becomes a big thing. It's like, you know, as we talked, uh, if the school district is the only school district to go when the bad, everybody else is out because of bad weather and you have a bus get off the, in the ditch, it's a problem some way or another by somebody, you know. So, he'd been talking about it, wanted to keep the schools open, and, um, in discussion with him a little earlier today, he called me to say that the Columbia closing, all the others that are out, that they, they were gonna have to make a change. So, we were kind of accordingly kind of following along with what procedures that we probably need to do as a city to be doing the right thing in most people's eyes, um, because who knows exactly what's right other than following the facts of what's being dictated by federal and, and local government agencies, correct? So, that's what we're seeing. So, with that, I'm gonna let her, uh, we've drafted a, a memo and, uh, a new procedure for the, the city hall. Um, we're gonna work, uh, very hard to make sure that we, we, we don't allow anybody to be damaged by the fact that they won't have complete access to fiscally coming in and that they're able to pay their bills. She'll explain a little bit more to you about, uh, the playing rules of what we're gonna be doing with the city. We will be in, we will be here for business, but not for public interaction of businesses, basically what this is gonna hold out. We'll be working, because you can't hardly not be here to do this work, uh, but to minimize contact, groups of ten and so forth like that, and that's such a small space up there anyway. I've been in there, six, seven people being there, uh, it can get really congested there. So, I'll let her bring you all up to date, what we talked about and what we're gonna do.
So, according to the plan that we've adopted, our pandemic flu preparedness plan, one of the things, uh, to do, and it's recommended by CDC and the federal government and the state government, is to limit face-to-face contact with people. We are, we're actually, this is a good time for us, we're at a slower time until the bills were due, um, yesterday and today by five PM. So, we have this kind of lag in time anyway. Uh, we're gonna utilize that time to, um, shut the front door of city hall, we're gonna leave the vestibule open, there will still be an area for people to come in and then you can put a payment in an envelope, and then they can put it in the night depository box, um, for us. If they need a receipt, we can mail them a receipt. We're just trying to limit that face-to-face contact there with people. Uh, but we will still be fully operational. All departments will be operating. We can't not, uh, we can't go without working with the water plant or, um, you know, being here for electricity purposes. Uh, we're going to limit to emergency disconnects. Um, the mayor has agreed to waive penalties, uh, not penalties, excuse me, um, convenience fees for online payments, so we will start taking payments over the phone and absorbing those convenience fees and encourage people to pay online as well. So, we're gonna do as much as we can to help customers in that way. Um, and for a minimum of thirty days, the mayor has agreed to not disconnect services at all, so.
You know, the, the key thing is, there's a lot of people, as we've discovered through this pay-to-pump thing, there's a lot of people who don't even have a debit card, so paying online is not an option, so we want to make sure that we, we're gonna take some, some, uh, action for people. A lot of people wanna pay with cash as they come up, so we've thought about those things, and we're gonna have a system worked out where they can come up with pa, uh, cash into the vestibule, make us aware of it, and then we would make sure that the cash is gotten and, and processed immediately, so we don't have any risk of that, those kind of things. So, we're thinking about everybody and each individual person, how can they pay their bill, how they can do it in a way that it doesn't, uh, damage them in any way and is not too inconvenient, and I think we're doing that. And I think we're doing what we have to do and, and what's expected for us as leadership of the city to, to be taking action for that face-to-face interaction. Uh, so, that's, we're ready. Questions about it?
What about the planning and zoning meeting that's coming up when we know there's gonna be opposition?
We're, we're gonna talk about that, I think, in a minute about the possibility of just either moving to.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be dressed, uh, I think, and we'll talk about that one, but, uh, that's kind of right, it may arise, but, uh, so anyway, that's kind of what it is, and so if you hear people, that way you guys know if you have any constituents in your areas or their ass gets filled or wherever they may be, ride down at your shop, wherever we may be, Plum yard, whatever, uh, when you're surveying, we can at least tell them what's going on. So, if somebody's telling the wrong story, we've shut down for business and we're not, we're making it difficult for them, we are not. We're, we're bending over backwards, we're gonna be here, but we have to take some actions, and we're trying to make it as, as, uh, uninconvenient as we can for the folks, okay? And that's all we can do at this point. You're, you're forced into it really, 'cause you gotta do the right thing. And sometimes it's questionable, what is the right thing, but when everybody's doing it, it's being mandated, you gotta really kind of, kind of go along with that, to me, so.
When does that take?
Um.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, minute.
Oh, tomorrow?
Yeah. Immediately.
It's gonna be communicated across the webpage and the Facebook and all that good stuff.
Be signage out here?
I think people are waiting for, uh, they're waiting for something. I think everybody's, you know. It's different.
And some of those folks that don't wanna pay a convenience fee but don't wanna be around people can do it, and they won't have convenience to be charged to them if they wanna do online versus paying a check or a person cash. Cause I don't, what, what is our convenience fee? I'm not sure.
Uh, we actually have two different ways to pay. They pay at the counter, that's a three and a half percent convenience fee, they pay online, through the website's three percent. So, we'd be waiting with three percent.
Gotcha.
Because we would process it through the online.
Okay. So, when people have budgets, you know, three percent is quite a bit in the scope of what your budget is potentially, so. Any questions, thoughts on that? That's all I had, ten points, yeah.
Is there an estimate out long, this is the one?
Well, at this time, we're gonna do it, uh, until the, the first of, of, of March, I mean, April, and then we'll just have to, we'll have to be seeing, this is a full situation, we'll have to be dealing with it as it goes along. Let me tell you, I sure as hell hope it's, it's by April first, this is over, because being honest with you, we are at a crossroads in our economy for, completely damaging our economy for the whole year, and not being able to rebound this year and, as a, as a nation.
There was a thing on television today that most of the airlines may go bankrupt.
Well, I've seen that on there, so, you know, uh, so I, I pray and I hope that this is a mute point from schools and everybody come that time, if it continues another two weeks after that, I guess we would follow suit, so right now is to be determined based upon the protocol of what's going on with this, uh, pandemic situation. My hope is, we get to the first of April, which everybody's kind of looking towards as a D-day of what this is gonna look like, and everybody relaxes and says, okay, and go back to normal life. Uh, we'll see. All right, now we'll go to, uh, are you done? You got anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll go to our city attorney.
Well, as everybody's heard, I mean, this is obviously a different time that we're dealing with. Um, myself and Heather, and I think the mayor, we're gonna be sitting in a webinar tomorrow offered by the Missouri Municipal League to discuss basically the power of cities and what they have in terms of times of emergency, emergency preparedness, and what from a legal perspective, um, the mayor's unable to do, what the role of the board is during these times of, of, you know, national emergencies, so we're going to be going through that tomorrow at two o'clock. Um, I would just offer that if you have questions, you know, obviously shoot them, Heather, ask me. I'm not for sure what the police department might be doing in terms of interactions with people coming into the lobby filing reports, but I'm seeing other municipal police departments changing the way people come in and file reports, because again, I'm a law enforcement, our first responders, they come into contact with people face-to-face all the time, and so don't forget that. Those men and women are out there every day, not only protecting the city, but now very much putting their life on the line, being faced with this potentially dangerous virus. So, um, there may be changes even coming from the police department. They haven't directly spoken with me about it, but that may be something that they have in mind, so.
Nothing, nothing, it's nothing legal, it's all just a day of operations. It's already, it's already been addressed, Heather's got a copy.
So, you guys have thought about that. On another note, um, the Supreme Court of the state of Missouri put out an order today shutting down all face-to-face court operations through April the third. So, this month, we did not have municipal court, thank goodness, so we don't have to worry about that. As of right now, we are still good to go for our April municipal court date, but again, this is obviously a legal situation, so if the Supreme Court comes down with an order extending that time, it's possible that we will not have our April municipal court date, but I'll let Heather know that as soon as and if there is any further direction. So, that's my update.
Thank you on that. Um, one of the things that got talked about too, uh, uh, I'll mention, I guess, this point, we're getting to as may arise, but in our meeting we had the other day, we were talking about first response, that kind of thing, limited equipment. Uh, I'm in the process of getting a, what I, what we would consider a pandemic kit, uh, for each individual employee to have that would be in, in stock, that's non-perishable to have for if you have a run on all the equipment and all the materials and all the things, the PPE and the things that you need. Uh, their, grains are fast, you know, a bunch of companies have done that, have those lists that for personal protection with the fire department, which would be masks, uh, nitro gloves, uh, latex, you know, some people are allergic to that. Uh, so we had a good visit about that, and, and that list I'm putting together, I'm, I'm gonna get that for you, because we are very challenged on getting anything as far as, and, and we don't have anything in stock really, none of what we just had. And so, when you start talking about how many gloves you're gonna use now and how much more, uh, product you're gonna have to have for PPE in some of these situations, they were talking about when they first respond, that they're gonna have enough people there, but they're gonna have two people go in, uh, to minimize their interaction at first, assess the situation and do whatever they need to, as many people to take care of the situation, but, um, trying to, uh, cut down on exposure as well as, uh, cut down on utilization of materials that maybe necessarily might be used to, uh, to kind of, uh, manage what supplies we have, the challenge we have to get them. Have we heard anything more about that from Mike? I know he was trying, he said he couldn't get anything that day.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I might. Uh, my forward email to Heather today that we got from emergency management reference for release of a state cash worth of PPE. We have to request that, there's a process for it. Um, I will have to go back and look at it, I don't have all the information. Like I said, I, I ordered the, Heather, did you look at that?
Okay, I, I know you've probably gotten a J email date like I have, but, uh, that's
something we can look at, because there is a state cash, and actually, there's a federal cash too, so.
We wanna take advantage of that, especially because we don't have individual, uh, you know, reserve pandemic kits.
Right.
For each individual. This may be a good time to.
We did, we did receive about, about sixty masks from OEM over the weekend. The OEM assistant director brought those up, they're in my office right now. Um, so, you know, the masks, we've, we've got some, but we don't, you know, the nitro gloves, I think every department decided if they do have some, so the fact is, we'll just, we'll go from there. So, I, I'll follow up on that, on the cash.
Well, I've been checking to find out from, in the industry, what people are doing, what they're seeing, how they're operating their businesses, whether it's government stuff or, uh, refineries, whatever it may be, uh, how, uh, whoever it may be, uh, boy, everybody's really, really limited in any access. It's just as needed, uh, absolutely pertinent, uh, to, to operations, period, like wherever anybody going in, and, and I work for one of the la, the largest probably distributor in the world, and, and I know people there, and, and my son still works there, and they had in one day over, over, I think, six hundred million dollars in orders, one day. So, that tells you the demand on the products that they manufacture, there's no way they can make it. So, we wanna be ready for this in the future when it happens again, and hopefully this isn't what, you know, it, it, some people are afraid it's gonna be, and it's, it's not that big a deal, but we never know when we're gonna have one, so we need to make some, that's one of the things that came from the meeting the other day, I thought was really good, is how do we now realize how we can be better in the future without breaking the bank, but doing what we need to do to be safe for our people and the people that we engage and that we have to service, uh, in the city. So, we talked about that, and I thought it was a really, really good discussion. Just, it's kind of bringing you up to speed, weren't there, so, would you, would you agree with that? I think it really was. So, good time maybe for us to get that list together and try and see about getting some of that money. If it's available to us, we're gonna take advantage of it. Uh, so that's, that's kind of a highlight on that. As may arise, is there anything else for anybody that, oh, C clerk, excuse me, I was about to go before you, I apologize. Terry, your mayor board does.
I'd like to.
All right.
Um, I think Heather and I wanna discuss just briefly and kind of address your question regarding.